You're live, your worship.
Thank you for all the order and yeah, we'll have an adoption, a motion to adopt the, would like to move item number nine B to nine A as the delegation. If I could have somebody in the motion for the
Hi, motion to adopt the agenda amended.
Great, thank you. Second, I will be and adoption of the minutes, can we uphold January 12?
Yeah, the last.
Interesting. If we're uncertain, we'll leave that one for now and we'll bring it up later if it wasn't adopted. So then a motion to receive or to adopt the minutes of February 9. That's me. Council Devon. And any business arising from, I'll take business arising from any of the minutes if there's anything there. Seeing none. Nonsense from the mayor just letting people know that Mayor Souls sends his regrets because some personal business they had to attend to today and was unable to be here today and asked for the filling. So first on the agenda, we have the Go By Bike people to, that are here as a delegation regarding the master transportation and I just invite Mr. Robson. Thank you and very, very welcome. And maybe I'll just do like a really brief introduction. Mr. Robson, Tom is working with the Go By Bike people and has been very, very active in behind the scenes on aspects of the master transportation plan and how we move as people within our community and certainly very appreciated. So look forward to more presentation and I will note that there is other Go By Bike people in the, in the audience and some that are watching remotely as well. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon and thank you council for this opportunity to speak to you about biking in Revelstoke. We'd like to talk about our support for the master transportation plan. As mentioned, my name is Tom Robson. I'm a bike commuter and a volunteer with Go By Bike. It's a provincial organization to promote cycling as a viable means of transportation in communities like Revelstoke. Since you will later be reviewing the master transportation plan at this meeting, I'd like to tell you that we believe the cycling part of the plan represents an excellent new vision for Revelstoke travel. It's difficult to introduce all the Go By Bike volunteers. However, I wanted to briefly introduce Suzanne Greve, who's back here. As she's a long distance bike tourist, a Nordic skier and the person who began this Go By Bike organization. And also Mike McNeil. He's a winter bike commuter. He just came in from the ski hill to join us. And Green Belt Society Director and he's our expert on bike route selection. Go By Bike is a provincial organization that began as bike to school and bike to work and now has branches in more than 60 communities in B C. In the next few minutes, I'd like to share with you the following. A new vision for the local Revelstoke travel. The people who are making this happen. The process and policy tools for implementation. And a look at the road ahead for bike, a bikeway network. Revelstoke has a new vision for healthy, affordable and safe transportation. This plan is a connected network of bike, pedestrian and transit routes in the Revelstoke Master Transportation Plan. And it will have many benefits. The big one. It's healthy and it's popular. Many B C cities and towns have adopted active transportation for economic, environmental and health benefits in of bike commuting. And during the last couple of years, Vancouver Bike Way data showed a 44% increase in bike riding. Many Revelstoke riders have shifted gears to this way of getting around because it's more affordable travel. The average family makes about $50,000 a year and spends $8,000 on transit. Bike commuting can dramatically reduce this family transportation expense. Simon Fraser University studies show the number of bike riders can double if safe, protected bikeways are constructed. There's also research showing that a boost in revenue for businesses located along bikeways. I want to recognize and give credit to the many Revelstoke people and organizations bringing this bikeway vision to life. Laurie DiNato and her staff recently developed a long-term Parks and Rec plan, which highlights the importance of the greenway and park trails as an essential part of this new citywide bike network. Parks and Rec also is a longtime supporter and sponsor of Go By Bike. This is the annual participation event first organized by Suzanne 14 years ago, when it was known as Bike To Work and Bike To School. You probably already know from looking around that residents here love to ride a bike. The bike riders participating in Go By Bike events record each ride on our B C website registration system. The results are truly amazing. The 2022 spring event just passed attracted 1,236 Revelstoke riders on 87, 87 different riding teams. Former Revelstoke Mayor Jeff Batterby started the Go By Bike Silver Streaks Bike Team. Every year, this major, this team is a major contributor to the 32,199 that are ridden in Revelstoke during Go By Bike Week. The trivia piece in this is that Bud Kendall now heads up that, that team. And just to entertain himself, last year, he decided I should ride virtually across Canada and back in Revelstoke. He rode 8,000 kilometers in this town. This incredible cycling participation distinguishes Revelstoke by having the highest per capita bike rider turnout in B C. There's a, there's a link on your agenda that shows that data for other, other cities and towns in, in B C. This last year, Paul Simon and the Revelstoke Planning Department produced a new council approved official community plan, which highlights the importance of, of a diverse local economy, healthy ecosystems and sustainable infrastructure for Revelstoke. A well-planned and implemented bikeway system will tick all of these boxes. The Go By Bike Committee members enthusiastically endorse this plan and our, for our community and have worked hard to make the bike network a reality. Some of those people are in the room with us today. Revelstoke Go By Bike riders contributed with cities or collaborated with city staff and volunteered on eight different planning committees. City engineering and public works head Steve Black was instrumental in helping develop this master transportation plan. Steve walked the trails and the roads with us to assess the best network for routing. This forward-thinking document uses the best practices developed in other cities to produce a long-term plan for biking and walking in Revelstoke. Go By Bike has contributed many hours to this project and offer our full support. Mike McNeil, who is with us as well, headed these efforts to map viable city bike routes and collected date data on city bike racks. Mike highlighted that the Revelstoke Public Works has installed 265 city bike racks. We're familiar with those. We see them on the streets all the time. If you add the racks at schools and businesses, that makes a total of 1,135 bike racks in town. Just imagine for a moment if we needed over a thousand more car parking spaces downtown. Instead, these bike racks are local businesses encouraging their staff and customers to ride and work and shop at local businesses like RMR, Credit Union, the Bike Shops, the Region Hotel Group, which are all strong supporters of the Revelstoke bike commuters. There are indeed process and policy tools needed to implement this program. The city staff need your support. And the tools to develop this system are described in section six of the master transportation plan. This implementation section covers policies, bylaws and action items, which will implement this multi-user network. Now let's just take a quick look at the road ahead. Revelstoke is a vacation destination and many visitors expect healthy, affordable and safe bike routes. So this is not just for local commuters, students, teachers and recreational bike riders. During the last three years, Revelstoke residents experienced many health and affordability issues. We hope these difficult times are fading and we can focus on making a positive difference in the way we commute. The 14th Annual Go By Bike Spring Event will be May 29th to June 4th. And this could be a great opportunity for us to highlight the progress Revelstoke has made on the development of multi-user bike and pedestrian network. At Go By Bike, we would love to see a city council bike team at the event. Go By Bike invites all of you to cycle to work or take a bike on your errands or perhaps just ride in the sunshine. This would be a perfect time for a ribbon, a ribbon cutting ceremony on our new airport road bikeway. So thank you for your time on this project. Thank you for, to our, our chairman and council and staff for your work developing the active transportation part of the master transportation plan. And we urge you to fully support it and its implementation. If you have questions about details of this bikeway plan, we have time for discussion.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom. Counsel, any questions, comments?
Counsel Cherry. Just a comment, Mayor Pauler. Appreciate all the work you guys have done here and everything you've done extensively over the last few years. Clearly, this is an awesome document and just want to say appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you for that.
I think Mayor Pauler. Thank you so much for your presentation. I want to thank you for that. Tons of useful information. Something that recently came to my attention is that with transportation costs, I want to say it's like the second or third biggest cost for families. So I think affordability, when we look at affordability, I think that's another key factor in, in getting these cycle pathways in. You know, if we can reduce the demand on, on vehicles, I'm not saving families money. So I, you know, applaud your efforts and fully support them. I had one question in regards to multi-use pathways. As a cyclist, as somebody who's out there on a daily basis, what's your, you know, there's talk about having separate pathways that are removed from, from roadways. As opposed to, you know, when I was growing up as a cyclist in Ottawa, it was just basically, you know, booking down Bank Street and, you know, yours, you know, elbows with the, with the side view mirrors of the cars. What kind of a, from, from your perspective, does it make a difference having like, you know, the, the multi-use pathways that are removed from, from, from roadways? Or, you know, that just doesn't need a lane in, in, in laneways or like what, what's your ideal kind of situation?
I, I as well started my riding in Ottawa and the bikeways there. They have a fabulous system. But our expert is Mike here, so I would ask him to address that question for us. Do you want to come up here, Mike?
Sure. Counselors, the, the multi-user pathway by far is the preferred way. And there's a few of those now. Airport way is a great example. So wherever that can be done, that's what is in the plan that I've seen. The next safest one for me is to ride your bike on residential streets where there's no conflict with automobiles. And that's a big thing for me. If I take the moment here, my goal in this whole effort was not to create a conflict with motorists and cyclists, but more collaborative. So that we don't claim important arterial routes. We claim multi-user pathways ideally where possible and residential streets. Example, Fifth Street is shaping up with that new roundabout and the pedestrian crossing is natural. Not that, and only when those are not available, then go to a bike lane on the side of the road and with protection where needed, i.e. the roundabout to the Ellis Ilawett Bridge on Fourth Street is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I just want to follow, follow question. With the increased ridership with, with, with cyclists, have we seen like a correlation in increase in accidents with, you know, with, with response from aimlances or anything of that nature? Or what, how is it, you know, like safety wise in the city, how is that for cyclists?
I would have to look at Vancouver where I spent most of my time. I used a bike to get everywhere in Vancouver because it was the only sane way to, to get around town. And from the years there, there was never any published thing in the papers and there would be immediately. Yeah, there's occasional accident, but the numbers were not greater.
It's not what you see a direct correlation, increased ridership.
And, and the key was because they did it so well. Vancouver really, I think I traveled around Canada through a four-year career and, and rode in other cities. But Vancouver really was my favorite and I apologize. I didn't ride in Ottawa. I skated on the canal there. So that's, yeah, we don't have the numbers here particularly for Revelstoke. Do you have numbers?
Yeah, there's a recent, there are recent studies that look at the wider picture, which I think is what you're looking for. And that is that, yes, ridership is up, but also the number of fatalities and, and injuries on bikes is down. And so there is a correlation between the two of developing bike routes and the seriousness of injury.
Right. Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you. I appreciate your answer.
Any other, any other questions, counsel? Any comments regarding, I think we were given a challenge of possibly creating a Go By Bike team. Counsel, any thoughts on that? Or is that something for us to talk about a little bit later?
I don't know how to ride. I'll teach you.
So I, I think we'll, I, I'm, I'm willing to sort of certainly take up on that challenge and maybe we'll have some dialogue on and see if I nod from Counsel Cherry and see if I keep up with it.
I want a tandem cycle for, for me and Counsel Devon.
I'm fully supportive of that.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. And thank you for your presentation.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. We're looking forward to hearing your discussion on the master transportation plan. We originally had planned to join other people. I think you've adjusted the, the agenda. Are you following with master transportation?
Yeah, it's following immediately. Yes.
Maybe we'll just, we were going to go online and, and watch the proceedings so that we wouldn't interrupt things. But I think as it stands, if you're going right into master transportation, we'd like to hear.
Great. Thank you very much. Director Black.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you for this opportunity to present this. It's it's wonderful to be in a place where much of the community has already stepped in front of you and said, this is the right thing to do. And so that makes me feel very good and very proud of the work that we have done.
Mr. Black, I'm just going to have you move just a little bit this way so that the, anybody that's viewing online can see you as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So with no further ado, our consultant team from Stan Tech Consulting is online. Mr. Ian Wilson will be doing a short presentation for you. After which I'm hopeful that we will have a fun discussion and the outcome of today's meeting is hopefully adoption of this plan at the next council meeting or adoption of this plan with recommendations on priority for our next meetings. Again, completion of this project along with the Water Master Plan that was adopted earlier this week are the backbones of the Development Cost Charge project, which is critical for the city. We have not updated that for many, many years. And now we know what the community and what our engineering has told us, we need to accommodate growth in the future. And so these are real important tools for city staff, for the politicians and for the community to know what we are doing and how we're going to pay for it. So with no further ado, Ian, thank you.
Yes, I thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Mayor and Counsel for, for having us here today. I, I started my screens there and all my controls disappeared. So I'm sorry about that. But I will run you through a quick breakdown of, of the transportation master plan and some of the key findings and conclusions. And, and we can have some opportunity for questions and discussion following that. So if you're able to hold your questions till the end, we can kind of get through this presentation quickly. Just starting with a little bit of history, the, the last transportation master plan was done in 2012, but it was never actually finalized or adopted by council. And that meant that the recommendations were not implemented. There, you know, there's some things that happened, but largely there wasn't the opportunity to get the actual work done and in the field and, and progress to be made. And so we, we started work on this about two years ago, I believe, actually. And the goal of this is to be a vision and a roadmap for the next 20 years in Revelstoke. And we've worked with the various teams completing the official community plan and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and try and aligned our document with those as best we can. And they're sort of together providing a, a future vision. Some of our goals for the master plan to develop a comprehensive bicycle network. The presentation that was just done shows this is a, this is a priority for, for local, local residents. As well as we want to effectively use the roadway for community travel and, you know, utilizing the infrastructure there as opposed to building new infrastructure, encouraging more walking, rolling, strolling and other similar modes. As well as improving the transit service and safety for everyone on the network. These are all sort of important aspects and, and things that we kept in mind throughout our, our work. I think I'll start off with the, with the good news of, you know, what is, what is transportation in Revelstoke today? And, you know, the, the key things are people are out there walking, people are out there cycling and, and a lot of the local groups and just the, the population themselves have really helped push this and, and it's great to see all of this in action. And also the, you know, administrative side as well, that the trails are being constructed, there's projects are going on and, and things are happening. And then the last thing is there is a robust, robust road network. I've, I've put an asterisk on there and we'll come back to that because that's not a there are, there are aspects that we need to sort of consider moving forward, but in general, the road network is there. It's, you know, it's adequate to accommodate what's happening today and, and adequate largely to accommodate the future growth. And some of the, the key gaps or concerns or areas to improve is just lacking of, of bicycle facilities. There's definitely some facilities, there's definitely opportunities to ride on residential streets. And there's active work to, to expand that network, but there's still areas that could definitely be improved. And one of, one of the key ones is the, the crossing of the Ellis Ilawett. There's, there's a, you know, road bridge that doesn't really accommodate cyclists very well. And there's the, there's a multi-use, you know, walking cycling connection, but it doesn't connect to the road network very well. So just trying to get people from the, the growth there in the south into the downtown and other areas of Revelstoke is, is definitely a priority. As well as the bicycle entry facilities, heard there's over a thousand bicycle racks in Revelstoke, but, but even, even where there are locations, there's demand that exceeds it. You know, this is a photo from the, when we were doing our open house. I believe it's from the open house or maybe it was a rest type visit, but you know, there's a bicycle racket. But it's overutilized and there's, there's bikes tied to trees and on the ground and there's obviously a demand for it. So something to, to make it, to produce obstacles for people who want to ride. And also pedestrian facilities downtown, there's, there's good pedestrian facilities, but as you get further away, there's, there's less and less of it. And it's sort of balancing that. You know, the road is a shared base versus providing facilities for pedestrians. And also poor transit ridership. Ridership was not excellent and COVID deeply cut that ridership. So that's, that's something that's definitely missing in Revelstoke. As part of the project, we did a, a good amount of engagement, starting with what had been done with the O C P work. We, we took their feedback and, and used that as a baseline and completed some online tools as well as an in-person engagement. And, and we've met with stakeholders and discussed that with, you know, the presenter from the, from the last item. We met with them and worked closely with them and, and they were able to provide great, great insight and, and advice to help it. And, and they've been very, very vocal on, on supporting this and, and we appreciate that. Because I, I think together we've put together a very good plan. So I will acknowledge this is a slightly scary slide. I love data and I love graphs. And I love sharing that data, but it's always a little tricky. So bear with me a moment. This is the, we use a location-based data service that takes cell phone data and converts it into trips for the, you know, Canada-wide, but we use Revelstoke data to sort of understand where people are going and when they're going there. So we've taken that data and we've estimated the number of trips, vehicle trips across the Fourth Street Bridge throughout the year. So this is, we've taken the average day of the week for each month and we've taken 24 hours of that. So essentially this is not quite exactly, but imagine that this plot is every hour of every day of a year. So you have the, you know, over on the left side, you have, you know, the midnight to 3:00 a.m. where some days there's zero cars across the bridge in the middle of the night. And then as you get further and further, you know, that, then it gets higher and higher. And then the very far right, that is the, you know, the one busiest hour, the, you know, Christmas, you know, the, the Friday afternoon, the following Christmas after a fresh snowfall. Right? That's the, that's the peak of the peak that year. And so, so what this is trying to show is that there are definitely concerns coming out of the stakeholder engagement, that there just isn't enough capacity on this bridge. And it, it's a choke point and it really needs more capacity. But it's not quite that. But it's not quite that simple. I think, you know, this is the you don't design a church for Easter Sunday sort of approach of, even looking at these numbers, there's still capacity on this bridge. But yes, there are times that it's busy, and yes, there's times that are going to be delayed. But this is sort of to show that this isn't every time. This is only some of the time that's happening. And we've got this yellow line with sort of the peak hour right now that we've kind of, we're using in our analysis. And then as the growth happens, we expect that number to increase. And if, you know, the same number of people are driving their car as opposed to biking, you know, that, the infrequent thing will occur more often. There will be more delay, but it's still sort of adequate to accommodate that volume. There's just going to have to be some timing changes of you can't just always assume you're going to get across the bridge and through those intersections with no delay. So that's just sort of something that's going to change as Revelstoke grows out and kind of move from there. And just a quick, you know, if we just focus on the 50 highest hours, this is the 50 busiest hours of the year. And looking at this, in the northbound direction, you know, largely it's the winter months, it's largely Friday, and it's largely the afternoon. You know, this is, you know, this would indicate that it's largely weekend travel, either people coming into town, people going skiing. The southbound is a bit more, you know, you've got the morning peak hour, people going into work presumably, and 4:00 people coming back from school, from work, maybe going out for the evening. You know, there's not obvious this is the one time that it's busy, but, you know, there are a lot of times where it's not busy. And that's what the sort of the intent of this is trying to show is that, yes, there will be times where there's delay, and you're going to hear from people, there is delay because there is, but this isn't the norm, this is sort of the exception. And so moving on from that, the high-level summary of findings, and we'll go through each of these in a bit more detail. But from a road perspective, we're, aside from, you know, continuing to do localized improvements as developments happen, whether that's intersections or sort of new connections for larger development, those are still gonna happen, but largely the skeleton of the road network is still good. We're recommending some changes to your road classification just to sort of better match what's out there in the field as well as looking at speed reduction to drop the speed from 50 to 30 and 40, depending on the road class. For the bicycles, you know, obviously, the gaps are the bicycle connections as well as the end-of-trip facilities. So looking at using the existing asphalt we have, instead of keeping it entirely for cars, in some cases, using some of that to accommodate a bicycle-only area, as well as just improving the end-of-trip facilities and making sure that if people choose to bike, that they have a place to park and they're not, you know, risking their bike by using it. And then for pedestrians, again, repurposing some of that existing roadway to get the pedestrian facilities, as well as looking at some specific intersection crossing improvements and just making sure that, you know, these crossings are well-marked and safe and appropriate for users. And then finally, for transit, the big thing from transit is combining the BC Transit and the RMR shuttle service, making that the same system to sort of improve that, you know, the economic model of both of them as well as the convenience to the user. And then also simplifying service. And maybe it doesn't serve every region of Revelstoke every day of the year, but it does, it is a robust, it's a robust network for the area it serves and trying to hit those critical areas and making sure that there's a reason to ride the transit. And again, you know, I touched on most of these, so I'll go fairly quick. But on the right is our sort of proposed road classification map, nothing too fancy. There will be some localized improvements, and then just the speed reduction. Again, mostly to better facilitate using the roadway space for pedestrians and cyclists and just improving safety generally, as well as, you know, helping accommodate those different modes. Pedestrian network, there's, again, spoken about, the downtown has got lots of sidewalks. A lot of other places don't. And one of the issues with that is that there isn't the drainage infrastructure. The ground is very porous, the water can just drain to the ground. So we're not getting curbs and gutters and catch basins, which means sidewalks aren't really feasible. So we're looking at, you know, using on-street walkways, just marking some of that pavement. But this is obviously something that needs to be coordinated with things like snow clearing and snow piling because that can take up a lot of the road when the snow falls. So it's, you know, maybe it's more of a summer thing, and maybe not all roadways have it accessible in the winter, but it's something that at least, you know, starts giving pedestrians the space where they can have their own. And then for bicycles, I think the, you know, the key thing is the river crossings. Either building connections into those existing river crossings or building new crossings to support some of these connections. And again, utilizing some of that road space or bicycle space. And just instead of investing the money in maintaining the road for extra width for the cars, give it another use and get extra value for your money. And just the example of what this looks like on a couple of example streets of, you know, taking a seven-and-a-half-meter road and making it a six-meter road with just a painted line with some signs saying this one-and-a-half meters is for pedestrians. And there's also an opportunity to do this for mixed use, like pedestrian and bicycle on a couple key connections as well. And all of this, aside from, you know, a little bit of paint and some sign, this is sort of low cost using existing infrastructure maintenance. And then for bike lanes, here's an option that would show two-way bike lanes on the road. And this would be at the cost of a parking lane, which from this individual photo, that obviously is not necessarily representative of the average use. But, you know, that would lose parking on one side of the street, but it would give you that connection across town, safer sort of separated bike lanes where people can feel comfortable not having to mix with vehicles. And then for the transit network, kind of going to a two-root system that are parallel and have several cross-upper points, trying to hit the key items, the aquatic center, the grocery stores, the school, the ski hill, the downtown, as well as sort of providing on-demand service or depending on the season, potentially, you know, scheduled service, as well as identifying a couple of future areas as development occurs or as, you know, use is required. And then combining, you know, combining the RMR resort with the local service. And the, you know, at the end of the day, it all comes down to cost. There's the capital cost, and there's operation and maintenance kind of once everything's implemented. So there's more details in the report, we can answer to the questions as you have them. But, you know, looking at, you know, 37 million, but of course, the big note of that is bridges. This includes the Big Eddie Bridge improvement as well as what, two other crossings of the Illis Silhouette. So that's the big chunk of the capital. And then sort of the operation and maintenance, looking at, you know, 2.3 million per year once everything's in place, and that's largely trails, trails and pathways. A lot, it does include the cost of the on-street stuff, but that cost is very minor comparatively. And then, so moving forward, what are the next steps? You know, step one is get this finalized and adopted. That was sort of what hamstrung the original plan in 2012. And so being able to get this finalized, you know, allows us to implement it and get working on these and start building the infrastructure to support the use that's happening in Revelstoke right now. And then also sort of using the data to change the DCC bylaw and try and, you know, collect the appropriate fees for new developments to happen and do a policy guideline update, continue to work with the stakeholder groups, and just implement the plan. This is, you know, it's gonna take some time, but start working and chipping away at it. And it's always good to kind of review and reevaluate this plan for five to 10 years and say, you know, what were we looking at? Has the vision changed? What have we done? Could we be doing more or less? You know, how have things changed? And that's the end of my presentation. So happy to take questions and provide more discussion. And Joe Olson is here as well. He handled a lot of the active mode stuff and the cost thing, so he'll be available for questions as well.
Thank you very much. Questions, Council? Comments? We, I think we would entertain a motion recommending Council adopting the plan. If someone was, I think that's what we're after ultimately.
Should, excuse me, Mayor, if that's the direction for our next meeting, that we move forward with adoption as this committee, the whole.
Right.
I am very interested in ascertaining priority. There are some aspects of this plan that obviously are underway at this point in time. The multi-use paths that you're aware of, the airport way. We've got a grant application in for a multi-use path from airport to park on the south side of Nickel. The completion of the multi-use path from park up to the new roundabout. Tuesday at Committee of the Hall, the mountain said, yeah, we're rebuilding that next piece from the roundabout to the resort and eventually, hopefully, down to Williamson Lake. We've got two safe school projects programmed for this year, Columbia Park and Arrow Heights. Joe and Ian have made it very clear that though we have a very robust downtown sidewalk network, we are lacking sidewalk and multi-use paths in many parts of the community. We have made significant investment in Arrow Heights. Columbia Park, with heavy snowfall in this year over Christmas, the roads were extremely narrow. There's a school, no safe place for kids. The Big Eddie needs some sidewalk along the Big Eddie Road. We've got numerous assisted living facilities that need that network connectivity. The transit system, we're working on combining the two systems to be operational by this fall. So we will not have a ready shovel and a BC Transit. We're gonna combine them and make that a prototype. And then the following year, we're hopeful that BC Transit will provide us new equipment, new system, and we'll have a robust transit system coming forward. So there's lots of things on the go. If Council is happy with the direction that we presented here today with this plan, let us know. If you have questions or need us to prioritize things above and beyond what is presented here today for the next following years, please let us know. There's a lot of information here. Obviously, we will be coming back to you as projects go to award, tender, and design and through the budgeting process, so that you will all see what we're up to and what our program looks like.
Councilor Orlando's got a question.
Sure, thank you, and through the chair. I guess in terms of just a broad, general question, residents respond to real things happening on the ground. So when they see that, you know, something being done, a trail being built or, you know, bike tracks being put in place, that kind of thing, that gets attention as opposed to in my view, whatever plans we're doing, often there's not a lot of, as much engagement in the plan because people want to see, you know, see it happen. So speaking to that question, Mr. Black, I want to see things happen. I want to, you know, see all of these plans and projects get into place. And my question is specifically about, obviously, some of these projects are very expensive and there's no way to avoid that, whereas other ones are not as expensive, such as like painting, you know, lanes on the road, but may have an element of communication and political will to it. Because, for example, if you're saying, okay, we're going down this road, you can't park on this side of the street, the neighbors are gonna, some people will have a problem with that. So I guess I'm gonna turn that question around and ask, you know, sort of, what do you need to see from us, from Council on that? What would you like to see from Council in order to help facilitate, for example, removing some of the roadblocks for things that are not held up because of budget considerations that are, just need to be sold and explained and communicated out to the community?
Director Black?
Thank you, worship. To Council, the low-hanging fruit is what we are chasing through the grant program. The next steps are more detailed around these concepts that are laid out in the plans. So perhaps taking a certain region of town and developing a comprehensive sidewalk or multi-use path that will address a neighborhood versus a one-off. And then once we have those area plans, so to speak, then we can implement the painting. And because we would be implementing a neighborhood plan, there would be that community outreach at that time, which would then provide the guidance to Council as to how people feel. Many of the things we will be implementing regardless of this plan, such as Forest Street traffic calling. And we met just before this meeting with our consultant team to implement those things. In my mind, we've got a great cycling community with no facilities. Imagine what we can do if we build those facilities, if we can get our bylaws to require end-of-trip facilities. And the new facility, they have to build a washroom, a shower, and lockers for staff to get to work, a safe place for their gear to be stored. And then their staff have the security knowing the year around they can do that. They've got their dress clothes, their work clothes there. That's an example of things that we can do. Making sure that all new development contributes to this network system, building sidewalks in the front of their properties, building a multi-use path casually, not for parking, but for multi-use paths. So many, many things that we can do. My opinion is that the first priority is keep building paths, separating the active transportation network from the road, and that's gonna be the best value that I see.
Councilor Lucic, do you have a question?
Yeah. First off, I want to say thank you for the presentation, really supportive of this Transportation Master Plan. Just a question about the pathways through Queen Elizabeth Park to the high school and to Bayview. There's been concerns brought up from the parents of both the schools from the last couple of years that we don't maintain those pathways in the wintertime, just resulting in kids having to walk down nine streets, which we are fairly good at plowing the snow from, but can become a hazard there. And just if there is any talks of a multi-use pathway going across the soccer field and as well as maintaining the pathway that's already through Queen Elizabeth Park by the playground.
Questions that are unfortunately well beyond the scope of this document. However, I can take that back to staff or in Public Works to see whether we can improve our management of snow across to the schools from existing network. The school district obviously is going to be the partner that needs to approve any sort of network across the soccer fields, which I don't support. However, we do need to make some changes there to get people to the school grounds. And from there, we can leave it with the school districts to improve their components of that too.
Yeah, sorry, when I say that, I mean, not obviously through the soccer field, but around the soccer field. Because we did have the sidewalk painted at Robson. So we brought up the concern of children crossing there, and then they have to follow the little rope trail through the snow. And just wondering, does that fall to the school district's responsibility?
If it's on their property, yes. If it's our property, then it's our responsibility.
So it's Queen Elizabeth Park, city property? Okay.
So I'll be certain to bring that up with the appropriate director.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions follow?
Yes. Sorry, I just have one other question. The multi-use pathway that's going from the green belt straight up between the, like right by the mill up to the roundabout, does the city currently own that land or is that just projected?
My understanding is that is city right of way. It was a former rail track.
Yeah.
And so it has been abandoned. I'm ninety percent sure that it's city right of way. And so it's a matter of funding it and making that connection to the, the bridge across the pedestrian bridge.
Okay. Sorry, one last thing. When we talk about end of trip and bike storage, is there plans for where these bike storages would go around downtown? Or is this just an issue that we know that we need to address?
It is an issue we need to address. You can see even now in the wintertime, we have riders using their equipment and we have no place for them to store their bikes, especially on a day like today. So having some covered bike storage would be optimal. Where that would be, I think, again, we need to look at a bigger picture of where the biggest nodes of use are. And I think our bicycle community can provide much of that data. The other opportunity, of course, is Grizzly Plaza. If we can blend some covered parking in there. Some of the concerns, and I think the, the cycling community would agree, is that if it's not watched and well lit, you're not going to leave your bike unattended. And so there's numerous issues that we have to work through. But we know that we can do it. This isn't the first place it's been through this process. And in that period, we built bike spas, enclosed key, key locked facilities for people to leave their equipment during the day with lockers and washrooms and showers and footwork works. I don't know that this community will ever need that, but I think many of the businesses can accommodate that need inside their own facilities. Long answer short, we need to plan it and, and see where all of these nodes should be. And again, it's a little more effort that will follow up of this master plan.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any other follow-up questions?
I have a question. Just in regards to what's currently proposed to council for budget, how does this impact the budget where the funds? Would this be like an additional taxation on taxpayers or are these funds kind of already allocated?
I can leave, I will make a statement and I see our director of finance is ready to jump in. We've had this report in a draft form for quite some time and working with the finance department, the engineering group has funded or asked that most of the first five-year items in this plan be included in our res, in the, the budget for this coming year. I believe that is still the case. Ms. Moore?
Thanks. Yes. In response to Counselor Stephen Hurst and, and just to add on to Director Black's comments, a, a large portion of this is the bridges, which is the growth related projects, which will require D C C update for funding towards those. And they're currently not in the plan. They're listed in the unfunded list there that was brought forward last week to council. And as for the, the multi-use paths and the sidewalks and other items that are on this plan, some of them will need to come forward as spending packages and other ones are currently in the plan or they're being grant funded through grants from the province or resort municipality infrastructure, the R M I, which is actually the report following this on the committee agenda. So we are looking to leverage as much grant funding as we can for those multi-use paths. However, you will see some implications come forward in the 2024 budget cycle.
Director, I'm sorry, counselor, Director Ronis is, is.
Yeah.
Counselor Steph.
Just a quick question or a follow-up to Ms. Moore's statement about the increment in 2024, would that be in regards to, you know, it's great to get grant funding for projects, but then there's always the future of asset management. So what would be the implication of, you know, once we have these, you know, multi-use pathways, bike lanes, et cetera? We've got to, we've got to maintain them. We've got to plow them, you know, extra time, extra hours, nobody's been working for free on, on snow removal, I'm guessing? No volunteers?
Absolutely correct. And, and the, the consulting team did mention previously in the report that at the completion of or adoption of the master plan and assuming we build all of the items that are included in there, we're looking at approximately two and a half million dollars in additional funding needed to maintain those assets. And of course, that's incremental. So if we build slowly, that number will follow behind in some way. It looks like it's about seven or eight percent of the total capital cost, which is generally reasonable from my perspective for maintaining things. So a $20 million bridge, we should be looking at a couple hundred thousand to take care of it on a regular basis. And so that would be the same guideline that we would utilize for additional snow removal, painting, signage, et cetera, et cetera. The good part about this is by reclaiming much of the road network and road width, is that we no longer have to repave it for cars. Right? We don't have to snow remove for cars. We have to remove for the pedestrians and the active transportation. But I don't need sixty feet of pavement to make this work, which technically means we might potentially catch up on our O and M of roads. Really robust, good road network that is sized appropriately. And I think that's a good section of this report also talking about our roads are too big for our community and that we should be reducing the speed limits. We should be looking at narrowing. It makes it dangerous for people to cross Third Street to get to, to the post office. We need to narrow those crosswalks so that it's safe for people. It slows down the cars. So there's a whole bunch of fun, traffic calming things that will come along with this to make our community more walkable, safer, slow people down and allow people to interact again instead of being angry that they can't go someplace.
Follow-up, counselor on line of note.
Yeah, you, uh, thank you. Through the chair, just in the spirit of answering your question or request for priorities, I, I, you know, I think everything's priority. I, so I, I don't want to overspeak to what I'm talking to, but I think, for example, number one, the, the pathway that South Counselor Lucille was talking about from the Black, to the Black Bridge to the roundabout through the old C P well right of way would be awesome. I live in that neighborhood, so I see the amount of traffic going down there. Currently, there's a lot of people who like drive to Kovach Park or drive down to Centennial Park because it's kind of seems to go around to get onto the green belt. Like that's, I don't, I think, I don't know if a lot of people know, but it's, it is like a real direct route and it's just like a few blocks from downtown. You're going to be right on the, the green belt there and into nature. So I think that one would be really great. Another thing I just want to put a sort of a plug in for is as we're considering things like bike racks and other facilities design, I think it's really important. And there's, I've seen other communities have partnered with arts groups to, you know, make like custom welded bike racks as appropriate. And I know the response is awesome to that, you know, people really love those things. And other of design considerations for that, that kind of stuff, like some places have removable bike or retractable bike racks. So they're on a hydro. So you can just drop it down into the sidewalk in the wintertime and lock it and then pull it up in the springtime. So you don't have to be driving all around to, to do that. But those kinds of introducing those things into the environment, as well as upgrading some of the racks, I think has a real positive effect. It really shows that people you know, that we're going somewhere with it. I, I know the current racks that we have, the concern that people express is that it's fairly thin aluminum bar and it's easy to cut through that. So somebody doesn't want to lock their $6,000 bike up to that. But if, you know, that design consideration is done. And yeah, I think for as long as I've been here, the, one of the ideas has been to, you know, get the trail system in place before we grow more so that, you know, it exists and is there to service us. So any, any sort of way that, you know, council can help get things going or be supportive or help, you know, communicate, you know, what's happening, you know, I'm happy to participate.
Counselor Devon, did you have a question?
I do not.
Okay. Counselor Lucille?
Thank you. To the chair, I would just like to put a plug in for just getting cost estimates for the Johnson Heights Connector to town. I know that that is an issue that people in Johnson Heights are continually dealing with. And I think when we talk about active transportation and safety, that would be huge for them.
Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, Acting Mayor Palmer. Just to the chair, you were looking for suggestions on prior, on prioritizations? That was correct?
Correct.
You've got a great list here already. Just in addition to that, I think we should focus on the same school network first, in addition to what Counselor Orlando added. Low hanging fruit and something that's been talked about for six plus years. Let's get those sidewalks built immediately.
Thank you.
My, my point of view. But everything else, I think this looks pretty good. Your short-term projects, including your medium-term projects, I need to review a bit more, but from first glance, everything looks looks great.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Steph?
Just two questions. One, have we looked at the future possibility of maybe partnering with a bicycle ride share company? You know, when you go into, I know, I saw it in Montreal, you can rent bikes and then, you know, you can slide your credit card, run it for half an hour and then leave it and somebody else will come along and do that. It's kind of like a ride share, like Uber, Uber bikes. I think that'd be, you know, a great asset in this community, especially as we move forward with the trail network. Then the other thing that's, you know, if we're talking about a plug for, you know, you know, projects and prioritization, it's already, I think it's coming up is the traffic calling for fourth street. You know, that definitely a concern.
So thank you, Mr. Black and the team. It's good to hear this discussion. I think one of the things that I'm hearing is that there's definitely interest in, I'm, I'm hearing from you, Mr. Black, that in a way, we're already implementing some of these recommendations because it's been a sort of evolving process for the last couple of years. And so there's actions that are already occurring. There is the budget process, the plans. It seems to me that with the adoption of the plan, then a little bit more depth diving in a bit deeper, okay, how are we going to get this stuff? What's the implementation land? What's the priorities? And that's a budget, drives budget things in the future. I, through some of the other questions at this point, or, and then I think we'll entertain a, a motion to recommend that council adopt the master transportation. There is a willingness at this point.
I'm prepared to make that motion. Sorry, you got me on the spot for wording, but recommendation, I move to recommend that council adopts transportation master plan.
Thank you. I have second, Counselor Cherry. Any discussion on that? Discussion? Okay. Well, I think I'll call, I'll make a comment beforehand. You know, I, I'm really impressed with, with getting to this point. We have a master transportation plan. I'm looking forward to getting adopted so that we can really implement the shift of designing around cars to designing around people. And I think that's the biggest shift that's on this. So I really look forward to that and then how we move over the term of this council and where are those priorities and how do we make this a reality? Where obviously, as we heard from the go buy bike people, we're highest per capita in, in that sector, the cycling sector, but there's many, many others in walking and a whole diversity of alternate modes of transportation. So I look forward to that, to that. And with that, I'll call vote on the motion. Those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you very much. Very appreciative.
Did you ever hear from either?
Sorry?
Did you ever hear from either of them?
We didn't, but that's okay. Well, glad you all have an opportunity. So that's the next item on the agenda. And Ms. Braun, do you have a present, I believe you have a presentation for us. Is that correct?
Yes, I do, your worship. If I can share my screen.
And you did have your hand up there. If there's something to sort of implement, it's probably regarding tourism. I don't know about being blended in your presentation.
Yes. I will speak specifically to the role of tourism for supporting multi-use pathways. Okay. Can you see my screen?
It's thinking. There it is.
Okay. So my presentation today is going to talk about all things related to tourism, kind of the big picture. So there's a number of different stakeholders in our community responsible for delivering different tourism services from the Chamber of Commerce, who's been operating the visitor information center under contract with the city, to our Tourism Revelstoke Partners who operate the M R D T program and tourism marketing. And our new conversations are starting to have with our C S R D and indigenous partners and recreation groups about how we use access and use our backcountry recreation amenities. So I'm going to start off with a bit of an overview of our R M I program, which is the key funding program for the city to invest in capital assets, such as the one Director Black was speaking about. I'll start with that and then I'll be giving the, the mic or the screen over to Megan Taber, Executive Director of Tourism Revelstoke. And she'll take it from there regarding what Tourism Revelstoke is responsible for implementing. So the R M I program, I had a chance to give all of you a bit of a rundown of this when we did your orientation. You came to our office space. You can see my screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we're one of fourteen resort municipalities eligible to participate in the program. It's been running since I think about 2008. I could be wrong in that actual date, but it's, it's a long time program in the province, started with the collection of accommodation tax. And then it shifted to primarily draw on other sources of funding for R M I communities. The idea being that this is a way to compensate for the impact of increased visitor traffic in these key resort communities. So the R M I is guided by the Tourism Initiatives Committee, which is a committee of council. And we completed a multi-year resort development strategy in October of 2022 and the former council approved that and it is guiding our actions going forward. So our resort development strategy, the key goals are to build and diversify tourism infrastructure, deliver exceptional visitor experiences and incorporate sustainable tourism practices and products. Our mandate is kind of a combination of the resort development strategy and tourism's vision that will pursue a sustainable mountain community by balancing environmental, social, economic and cultural values within a local, regional and global context. And we are world-class destination while being an authentic and vibrant community for our residents. So the R M I program has several key goals and this is what we use to assess the key projects against these, against these goals. So to increase resort activities and amenities, increase visitation and visitor activity, increase private investment, increase employment, increase the contribution of tourism to our economy, increase our M R D T tax revenues that come in courtesy of visitors staying in our, in our region and to diversify our municipal and regional tax base and revenue sources. So I'm going to walk you through a few different examples. Before I do that, I just want to mention that what is key to our resort development strategy implementation is input from other city departments. Most of the funding is allocated to city-owned amenities, which fall under the responsibility of engineering and public works to build and parks and recreation to manage in addition to our events and programming. So it's very much a collaborative effort. We primarily in economic development, look at the sector writ large. That's the whole idea of the tourism industry and how to support that and reduce barriers. But it's really the transfer of provincial monies to the city to invest in our capital assets that then becomes a responsibility of other key directors on the city staff. So it is different, definitely a collaborative effort. And as Steve and Lori know, I'm constantly pulling them into meetings and asking their input and asking for their help and guiding how we allocate the funds. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of key projects we've completed or are undertaking over the next three years. So as most of you have had the chance to see, our new business and visitor information center upgrades took place in the last two years, which included new accessible public washroom facilities to accommodate the sometimes upwards of 800 visitors a day who visit the downstairs visitor information center. Includes a water bottle filling. Includes a water bottle filling station, new office space for tourism, a new home upstairs for community economic development, together co-located with Tourism Revelstoke and the home of the idea factory next door to our, our place, the State of the Art Fabrication Lab. So that was primarily funded through Resort Municipality Initiative Funding as well as EOF Funding. A couple of these key city assets I've mentioned, the Wayfinding Signage Strategy, and this is the Visitor Information and Directional Signage that helps to improve connectivity between our different visitor amenities and our city attractions. In the last Resort Development Strategy, we allocated $536,000 to the first phase of the Wayfinding Strategy. And we have $300,000 targeted for this next phase. And I believe Director Black will be bringing you forward a report at the next council meeting with regards to how they're planning to spend $300,000 in the next phase. These are some of the other assets we've, we've developed. We mentioned previously the multi-use pathways. So there's a bit of a multi-use trails, covers a couple of different, a variety of different venues. So there's a multi-use pathways within the city, and there's also recreation trails outside the city that are managed by recreation groups and partnership of rackets and trails BC. So they include the Cycling Association, the Alpine Club, mechanized sports like the Sliders or Dirt Bike Club, but these are all essentially multi-use trails that are used for a variety of different purposes. And so in the last generation of our Resort Development Strategy, we spent $577,000 of RMI money on multi-use pathways, in addition to another $80,000 of EOF funds that went towards some different recreation groups, with about 55% of the funds spent outside the city in Area B. Our next Resort Development Strategy that's underway now, we've actually shifted the focus quite a bit to dedicate $900,000 to RMI funding to capital assets within the city and another about $100,000 over the three-year period to allocate to recreation groups. We've also are proposing to draw on our EOF funds to support some of these recreational groups' activities for ongoing maintenance outside the city to the CSRD Area B. Other examples of recreation infrastructure that RMI funds would include the Climbers Access Society, their climbing routes and pitches around town, where a bit of a mecca for climbing, and that sector is growing increasingly. We have the Green Belt Society, groomed winter trails. We'll be discussing that a bit more at the next, next council meeting too, but I wanted to include a couple of photos on this presentation. So you can see, if you haven't been out on the Green Belt Trails, I don't know if you, if anyone can appreciate how much volunteer work goes into maintaining and upgrading these trails and providing the grooming services in the winter that have, have just hugely increased access, especially for physically disabled people to the Green Belt Trail Network. We've also invested in amenities on the ski hill. The Dark Horse Women's Mountain Bike Course was built last year. We've invested in the Snowmobile Club to ensure that they have tracking abilities so that we can track how many visitors are coming with their snowmobiles in what area of, of the, the region. And then we can use that data to build a better picture of what is economic impact of snowmobiling in Revelstoke. We've invested in the Adaptive Sports Society to ensure access to different kinds of trails and winter and summer amenities. And we've invested funds in arts and culture infrastructure, including our Alarveys Project, amenities to the Forester Museum to enable events being planned and different kinds of infrastructure requirements to host events throughout the community. So events is another category we use RMI money for, and we again collaborate really closely with Tourism Revelstoke on this one. They contribute at least as much, if not more, to the range of events and programming. So we work together and making sure that we are directing resources to those events that serve the needs of visitors as well as improve the quality of life for our residents. These are a couple of different examples over the last few years. We've also been putting some funds towards Indigenous reconciliation and Indigenous tourism. Last year, we funded for the first time the salmon feast and the launch of the Snacks Canoe Trip down the Columbia River, and that is returning this year, I'm excited to say, with a larger group than ever. And the fleet will be launching from Revelstoke for the, again, the second time in, you know, our quite a long history, and we'll be inviting the public to come and watch that event. Shuttle bus services, we've committed over the past several years, $95,000 in RMI funding and $200,000 of EOF funds for the services in the last three years. And then from 2022 to 2024, we're targeting about $55,000 of RMI funding and about $300,000 of EOF funds. And as we work closely with Director Black to kind of revamp the service, amalgamate it with BC Transit, expand it to year-round services and expand it to destinations in the region outside of the city. And lastly, mobile visitor services. This has been huge. You know, we're seeing more and more people bypass perhaps the Visitor Information Center and go straight up to the top of Mount Revelstoke or to the resort or to participate in events. And it's not that traffic is dropping off, but we're just seeing more and more and more people coming to town and not necessarily available themselves of that bricks and mortar visitor information service. So this enables the tourism staff and the Chamber of Commerce staff to get out to the different events, to get up to the top of Parks Canada, to get to the resort, and to share information about what other kinds of activities and amenities in town they can, they can visit and partake in. So before I pass it over to Megan, are there any questions all about the RMI program?
Questions, Council? Go proceed.
Okay, I'll be returning on the 28th of February with a full report on the first round of allocations with this year's Resort Development Strategy funding. But I'm going to turn it over to Megan Tabor, the Executive Director of Tourism Revelstoke, and she'll walk you through how Tourism Revelstoke supports tourism in the community primarily through marketing and their shift to destination management.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm just double checking that you can see our screen share?
Yes.
Great. So my name's Megan. I'm the Marketing and Destination Director for Tourism Revelstoke, and I was able to meet some of you at that brief interaction earlier in the year. And I'm going to run you through the MRDT program. And then I'm also going to have my colleague, Robin Goldsmith, who is our Sustainability Manager, come on and talk about our destination management planning process that we're just moving through right now. So just a brief overview on kind of who we are. So Tourism Revelstoke right now is kind of the amalgamation of the Revelstoke Accommodation Association and the Revelstoke Chamber of Commerce Visitor Experience Department. So we run the marketing, and most recently, we also have kind of a destination management function as well. So you can see everyone is in green, is under the Revelstoke Accommodation Association. And then those in black are currently sitting under the Revelstoke Chamber of Commerce and operate Visitor Center and Visitor Services. And like Ingrid mentioned, we have kind of three partners that are involved in tourism here in Revelstoke. So the Revelstoke Accommodation Association and Tourism Revelstoke. So we're the destination marketing and management organization. So we create the annual tactical plans, we report to Destination BC, we produce the five-year strategy. And then the City of Revelstoke is actually responsible for submitting those plans and strategies. They're the designated recipient of the MRDT, and they receive that funding through the province and flow it through to us to implement these programs and projects. And then finally, the Chamber of Commerce is currently in charge of running the Visitor Center and the Visitor Experience Department. So if you're not familiar with the municipal and regional district tax program, so the MRDT program, it's something that we refer to a lot. It's an up to 3% tax applied to the sales of short-term accommodation in British Columbia. It was implemented in 1987 by the provincial government, and it's administered by the Ministry of Finance, Ministry of Tourism, Arts and Culture, and also Destination British Columbia, who's our provincial marketing organization. And the program provides funding specifically for local tourism marketing programs and projects. And we are very lucky and grateful to spend these funds that are supported by local government and our tourism stakeholders as well. We work very closely with Cooney Rockies Tourism, who's our regional destination marketing organization, as well as Destination British Columbia at a provincial level, and less so with Destination Canada, but we do have some touch points with them as well. And then so a little bit of background on the program. So our current five-year strategy is actually set to expire in April of 2023. We generally have to submit an annual tactical plan and annual budget every year in November to get approved by the province. And we've recently just had our new five-year strategy approved in January 2023. So we just got that notice about a month ago. And there's two major changes that are actually going to come into effect as of May 1st of this year. And one is that we're going to be increasing the tax collection from a 2% to a 3%. And that additional percentage is going to be allocated towards our destination management initiative specifically. And that's where kind of Robin will come in and chat a little bit about that. And then the other big change that happened in this renewal period is the expansion to include the CSRD Area B. So it's no longer just accommodators in the City of Revelstoke will be collecting on our behalf. But all of the accommodation properties that are located in the City of Revelstoke and CSRD Area B. So this increase in funding, what it looks like is really a 0.8% increase over what we're currently doing. And like I said, that 0.8% is going to go into destination management initiatives. We have our 2% for existing destination marketing organization activities. And then we're mandated to submit 0.2% to Destination BC for a provincial events fund. We're able to tap into that funding and we already have. That's where $200,000 came in for the natural selection tour that Revelstoke Mountain Resort is going to be putting on in March. So we'll continue to apply to that provincial events funds that we can get some of that funding back that, that we put in. The other thing that I think is really important to note is that the increase in MRDT, along with the CSRD Area B expansion, is really going to give us a big bolstering on the online accommodation platform MRDT, which is the funding that goes into the Affordable Housing Fund. And I'll speak a little bit more about where we're at with that as well on the next couple of slides. Last year, we went through a full board restructure. So we, in the past, we were all accommodators on the board. And last year, we went through a board governance review, and we actually diversified our board to represent the tourism sector more broadly. So our board consists of four traditional accommodators, one non-traditional accommodator, who's currently a short-term rental property management company. We have four experienced providers on the board right now and two representatives from Revelstoke Mountain Resort. And this slide gives you an idea of we, where we're sitting with the MRDT. So obviously, a lot of growth from program inception until 2019, and then a pretty drastic decline during COVID. And 2020, 2021, we're, we're pretty much bang on in terms of the MRDT coming in. And in 2022, we're looking at a massive increase even over 2019. And a big reason for that is really the ADRs. So the average daily room rates for hotels have gone way up. We're seeing pretty flat occupancy in 2029, 2022 compared to 2019. So it's really those, those hotel rates that have skyrocketed the MRDT. You can see that we're the number one collecting community in the Cooney Rockies region, and we're currently sitting at number 10 in all of British Columbia. But I really do imagine that will change. Once we start implementing the 3%, I think we'll see, we'll become in the top 10 for sure. And then this is just a slide on where we're at with the online affordable, sorry, online accommodation platform MRDT. So this, this program was implemented in 2018, so we continue to see it grow. I, I don't believe anything's been done with the funding yet. This is a funding pot that the city is managing currently. So we're sitting at approximately almost $500,000 in our online accommodation platform MRDT for affordable housing. The vision and mission that was implemented in our new five-year strategy involves Revelstoke being a world-class destination while an authentic and vibrant community. So that's aligned with the RDS strategy as well. And our mission is to really inspire those value-aligned visitors to experience Revelstoke and to grow sustainable tourism opportunities that benefit the community. So this is a big change from our previous mission, which didn't have those pieces around value-aligned visitors and sustainable tourism opportunities benefiting the community. Our brand pillars remain the same. So adventure, authenticity, nature, and heritage. Every activity that we do encompasses one or more of these brand pillars. And the five planning priorities that we identified in our Destination Tourism Five-Year Strategy include a year-round destination, a multi-day stay, remarkable visitor experiences, holistic destination stewardship, and organizational excellence. I'll give like a really high-level overview of kind of what we're talking about with these five pillars. So when we're looking at a year-round destination, we really want to maximize visitation in the summer, but can, and in the winter and those seasons, but really consider our carrying capacity. So you know, in those really busy months, maybe we start to tone down the marketing a little bit if we're already at full capacity. We also want to look at increasing visitation in the shoulder season, specifically May, June, September, and October. And I'll probably note that September is actually starting to move into more of our peak season as well. In terms of a multi-day stay, we're really looking at increasing summer and shoulder season length of stays. In the winter, we'd like to increase the midweek length of stays. But yeah, the length of stay in the summer and shoulder season is really a priority for us to go from those one-night stopovers to two, three, or more night stays. Remarkable visitor experiences is something that we've always done really well at. And so kudos to the Revelstoke Chamber of Commerce for implementing this. We have a great visitor sentiment around our destinations. We want to really keep that strong. And we'll do this by growing our positive word of mouth, growing repeat visitation. We really want to look at increasing that accessibility and those opportunities for people who need that and meeting a greater diversity of visitor interests. Holistic destination stewardship involves ensuring that tourism really enriches our community, and it gives more than it takes away. So we want to ensure that our natural areas are protected. We want to commit to and support reconciliation. We want to be regarded as a destination leader in sustainable tourism, and we really want to foster community support and pride for what we're doing. And then finally, this is kind of an internal goal for our organization. We want to make sure that we have a diverse representation from our stakeholders in terms of what we're doing. We want to make sure that we're able to secure the financial resources to continue to deliver on our mandate. And we want to be a stable, effective, and resilient organization with happy and fulfilled staff. So what we've previously focused on in our five-year strategy was extremely marketing-heavy. You can see some of the activities that we have kind of taken on in the yellow box. I won't go through them all. And then we've had maybe a lesser focus on developing that meetings, conferences, events, and sport, the visitor service and visitor experience, and the destination management piece. And where we're really moving to in our next year, five-year strategy is kind of a more equivalent balance between destination marketing and destination management. I'm going to pass it over to Robin to kind of explain where we're at with the destination management piece.
Thank, thank you, Megan. I applaud the work that you've been doing, working hard and having some really good success. So just thank you for that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. And so my name's Robin. I'm the Destination and Sustainability Manager, which is a new position that we implemented last May, although I've been with the organization for just about four years now. And so over the last year, we've been working on creating a destination management plan for Revelstoke. This is where our industry is going, especially since, since COVID, people had an opportunity to sort of rethink the effects of tourism on their communities. And we're finding increasingly the role of destination marketing organizations moving into destination, destination marketing and management and really considering the community's needs and not just purely promoting visitation. So we've been working on this project with Destination Think. They are a consultancy who operate a number of projects throughout the world and, and other comparable mountain communities. And their CEO happened to move to Revelstoke a couple of years ago, so that's been very helpful. One of my colleagues who's working on this with me articulated the goal of the destination management plan really well. He said, "This project is about uncovering the community's long-term vision in a way that inspires immediate action to make Revelstoke a better place for visitors and residents." Which slide's there? So since we started working on this in June, we've been doing a really robust resident engagement project. So we did a couple of film screenings in the fall, and I know some of you attended those. So we screened 2040, a film that focuses on environmental projects and the last. We recorded a podcast called Think Revelstoke, where we interviewed a number of locals, as well as some industry leaders about their thoughts on some of the challenges facing our. as well as some industry leaders about their thoughts on some of the challenges facing our industry. We did a really fun school project where we asked kids what their vision was for Revelstoke in 50 years. We created a new website. It's a little more resident and stakeholder-facing, destinationrevelstoke.com instead of seerevelstoke.com. We have our ongoing tourism talks column, which we've been publishing in the Mountaineer, which highlights some of the things that we're doing as well as some of the issues facing our industry. And then one-on-one interviews with local residents. Slide. And so in this surveying and resident engagement process, we, we surveyed just about 1,100 residents. And I would say the overall sentiment that we, that we came up with is that people really love living here. So someone said, "I feel strongly positive about the quality of life in Revelstoke. It is an inherently special place to live and is bolstered by wonderfully friendly people." But on the more negative side, someone said, "People are leaving when affordability becomes an issue, when housing prices are skyrocketing, and there's not an equal balance. People need to leave." So those are the kind of contrasting sentiments that we came out with from our surveying process. So to develop our destination management plan, we've also been looking at all of the existing plans in Revelstoke. So did a canvas of a lot of the things that have been worked on at a city level or by other organizations. So looking at the OCP, at our own strategic plans, the poverty reduction strategy, our internal green step action sustainability plan, and a number of other existing documents, Revelstoke Mountain Resort's strategic plan, all of those types of things that exist in our community. We've engaged with other destinations to find out what comparable communities are doing to solve some of these problems. We've been working on collecting data, including employment data and, and more data about our visitors, who's coming here, how long they're staying, that sort of thing. And then doing some historical research about our community and sort of what's unfolded over the last 50 years. So we've created a draft plan, and where we're at with this is that the Tourism Revelstoke Board is currently in their review phase. So they're supposed to have comments back to me by February 24th. I would like to get a draft plan to city management and council in late February. And then early to mid-March, send that out for discussion with our broader tourism stakeholders, so beyond just our board. In late March, we'll be rebuilding this Destination Revelstoke website to complement our action plan and speak to what we, what we plan to do out of this plan. And then by April 1st, I'm hoping to be able to circulate the plan to the broader community and then begin implementation when we move to that 3% MRDT and have that 0.8% allocated to destination management. And so if you're interested in this process or you'd like to chat with me about it further, I would absolutely welcome that. So you can email me, robin.goldsmith@seerevelstoke.com. Head to the new website, destinationrevelstoke.com, read the tourism talks column, which we have in the Mountaineer online. Listen to the podcast. We have some local resident stars on it. So I really recommend the most recent episode, our final episode about housing, which we interviewed Elijah Boss from Aspen, as well as Marla Zook from Whistler, from the Whistler Housing Authority. And then when we are able to circulate that draft destination management plan, I would love for your attention and support in reviewing and providing feedback on that draft. Thanks.
Thank you, Robin. And Megan, are there any questions from council for other, other of these two about what Tourism Revelstoke is doing? One thing they didn't do is really blow their own horn because they are award-winning team. They've won a number of awards provincially for their outstanding marketing. And I think they're going to bring that same level of commitment and quality to the destination management planning process. And the reason I wanted to, to bring all of these topics together under one presentation is because they dovetail so well. So we've already talked about how we're able to use RMI money to improve the quality of life of our residents. And you see here, destination management planning is also intending to support higher quality of life for residents and, and try to understand what the negative impacts of tourism are and how we can mitigate those. So the last topic I wanted to, to have some discussion with council about is our approach to backcountry recreation access planning. This has been discussed for some time. I know that Mayor Salz had, had confirmed commitment from the province to, for our community-led backcountry recreation access planning process. But I wanted to walk you through where we are, what we've done to date, and, and have some discussion on, on what would be the best way to, to proceed. So with the changes in the minister's different portfolios, a full land stewardship planning process is a responsibility of the province and will be led by the new Ministry of Land, Water, and Resource Stewardship in collaboration with First Nations and Industries. So, you know, I'm not clear on what role exactly a municipality will play in that, other than we know we have to be at the table. So we want to ensure that we can support a community-led process that will align with and support that land stewardship planning process by identifying the community goals and priorities, as well as identifying those user groups that are impacted and other, other stakeholders. So we're proposing to bring together recreation groups, commercial tenure holders, tourism stakeholders, environmental groups, and other interested parties to identify initiatives to inform and facilitate collaboration between different user groups operating in the backcountry. So in 2021, we funded with CED funds, State of the Backcountry Study that was undertaken by Selkirk College, their Rural Development Institute. If you recall, I guess, yeah, previous council had, you know, they had entertained a proposal to apply for a fairly significant chunk of funding to undertake this. It was turned down. We went ahead and funded, I think with about $10,000 investment, Selkirk College to undertake the State of the Backcountry Study by only accessing that publicly available information, mapping different tenure users, different tenure holders, who's doing what, where. And that information was all available publicly, but we brought it together under one roof. We worked with the engineering department to house that, that mapping data on our city's server. And we have this now ready to go. Our staff are getting trained, and this will be a really important tool to inform discussion about how we use and access the backcountry. So we've done that so far. As you know, we hired a First Nations Indigenous consulting liaison and project coordinator. And Dale's been doing a lot of work, you know, joining meetings at the Shushop Trail Alliance, trying to understand some of the best practices with regards to Indigenous consultation around backcountry use and reaching out to different stakeholders to understand that kind of Indigenous lens or Indigenous values that will inform a future land stewardship planning process. So as I shared with you the other day, you know, we're starting to look at how we can support different recreation groups, bringing them to the table to start that discussion. And we've been talking to the province, looking at other best practices such as the Shushop Trail Alliance or the Golden Trail Alliance and their BRAP process, Backcountry Recreation Access Planning process. And so we'd like to form a recreation alliance that wouldn't be limited to just trail use, but also water use and access to waterways and pull together different, different stakeholder groups and start that conversation. And, you know, I guess what we're looking for is, is your input on that process, on the information gathered to date, and propose next steps to facilitate a community-led process and develop different kinds of tools and initiatives that'll inform, inform that, that backcountry recreation access process and how we can align with the province. So any comments on that or input into that? We've had discussions here and there about this as we access, we access the OF funding to support the State of the Backcountry Study, as we access the OF funds to support different recreation groups, the Indigenous engagement and facilitation around forestry sector transition. And, you know, we're hoping to launch the State of the Backcountry Study at the upcoming conference on responsible recreation.
Questions, comments, council, Councilor Cherry?
Thanks, actually, there, farmer. Through the chair, will this be something that's going to also be on top Revelstoke for more community response as well?
Absolutely.
Have you thought about also putting something at the farmers' markets? Would there be an information booth, all of that, just to get more feedback, communication for the community?
Definitely. I think this will be a multi-year process. I think we're partly waiting on direction from the province as to how they'd like to see more of the land use, land stewardship conversation happening with the First Nations. So we just want to do what we can in the background to be ready for that conversation, bring together different recreation groups, use the tools we've accessed, you know, with mapping, for instance, with facilitation with different user groups to start the conversation going. But yes, there would be a robust public engagement, certainly about what people want to see happening in the backcountry. And I guess, you know, the reason this fits so well with destination management and what Tourism Revelstoke is proposing is that they're already doing that. They're already having those conversations about what residents want, what the priorities are, what they want to see happen with the future of tourism. So it's, it aligns well with, with Tourism Revelstoke's aims to move towards more sustainable destination management.
Awesome. I applaud you for taking a proactive approach rather than, you know, what we usually see as a reactive approach. We finally get feedback from the province. It's a great way to get ahead of everything that's coming. So thank you, guys.
Any other questions for council?
Ms. Brown, I, I don't know the answer to this, and so I guess that's why it's a question. It seemed to me that there was some study possibly initiated by the province on backcountry use. Previously, I think Jane McNabb was maybe involved with that. Is, can you just give me a quick snapshot as to what that background and how that ties into this work?
Yeah, and in fact, Jane McNabb is one of the first people we turned to to form a small working group to oversee this process. Because we, we look at all the different recreation groups who will all have skin in the game, but we want to be very careful to set up a process that's going to be inclusive. Because we are tying some funding through EOF and RMI to the recreation groups. So looking at a small, fairly neutral and partial, well, not a partial in terms of their, their passion for backcountry recreation. But yes, Jane McNabb was involved in, in prior discussions around backcountry recreation access, similar to what was done in Golden. It's quite dated, that study. And again, with Mayor Salz's efforts at the provincial level to ensure that there is a community-led process, we really need to start building that from the ground up in the community. But we're certainly looking at all the best practices and examples of what has been done elsewhere to grow. I'm not sure that answers your question.
It's helpful. And at this point, there isn't any direct funding from the province, is that?
Not yet. Again, you know, there had been some commitment from the province to support a community-led process, but no word yet on what that looks like. I think the biggest challenge is that the new ministry, which has just formed in the last year on land, water, and resource stewardship, is really looking to have this process be Indigenous-led. So we are trying to do what we can with the tools we have access to, building relations with the First Nations, bringing in an Indigenous liaison coordinator who actually, you know, has a background in adventure tourism and understands all the different moving parts, enabling this, this study for the State of the Backcountry, and then housing the, the mapping on our city system so that we can use that as a tool to inform conversations. But what's been recommended by the ministry's representatives is that we start with something like a recreation alliance model on the Shushop Trail Alliance, bring people together, start talking about common goals, protocols, what would be the needs that would want to be addressed, what does a community backcountry recreation process look like? And Jane McNabb would be central to that, as well as a few others we've been working with. And then at that point, we would probably go to the CSRD EOF fund for funds to support a larger kind of facilitation, community engagement process. But again, it has to be in alignment with what the province is going to be leading.
Any other questions, Councilor Lando?
No, not, not really a question, just a comment through the chair. I think that's great, Ingrid. You know, my takeaway in the past, the provincial government a few years ago was signaling they were going to do this. And then I think they just ran out of capacity at the time. And this is to follow up on comments that I made the other day. But I think one of the roles that the city council can play is just bringing everyone together as much as possible. And it sounds like that's what you're, what you're doing with the, the recreation alliance. In other areas where they've had the planning, they've, they've had some conflicts over various issues. And I think the province is really looking for local partners to like, you know, get the various backcountry groups together and, you know, focusing on our strengths. So I'm, so I'm happy myself. I'm sure the rest of council is to play a part in that. And yeah, thank you for taking on me.
Thank you. And through the chair to Councilor Lando, I think I'll just emphasize again that, you know, we're not yet sure what our role will look like. We know that with economic development being a regional service, this is a perfect, you know, opportunity for the city to be involved, working closely with their different partners. But the tools we have at hand that we are trying to build out and make sure that we have resources dedicated to them is our mapping of all the different recreational uses of the backcountry. That's done. It's complete. It's on our city's server. Our Indigenous relationships, which we are working on quite productively with our new liaison role. And then the funds we have to leverage, the RMI and the OF funds that we can use to support those recreation groups, get them to the table and, and get their input into, into what would, what would be important to them to ensure continued access, sustainable development, and that long-term vision for, for tourism and recreation in our area. So thank you. That is everything I had to share with you today, but I look forward to bringing this conversation back when we have the outline of a plan starting to form.
Just any other questions before we move on? I, I do have one other question, and it's just on, on the scope, so the, the users of backcountry. So how far does this go? Does this go to Halle scheme? I'm not asking for an answer right now. But even that conflict, and then the geographic scope, do we have a sense of the containment of how far this would be? And I, I suspect that's still under, underworking, trying to figure out the, the scope.
To your worship, I do have a couple of answers for you. In terms of the scope, we conducted the State of the Backcountry Study based on the CSRD area B. Roughly, given that's our mandate for economic development for the city and CSRD area B. So all of the mapping tools that we have that we're housing now in the city's GIS system are contained within area B. In terms of the, the scope, we have talked, and again, trying to get some idea of best practices from other groups about kind of a tiered approach. So for instance, non-mechanized recreation groups, you know, first tier, leading the discussions. And then you bring in the mechanized recreation groups. At the same time, you have to have parallel discussions with the commercial tenure holders. We've met with Rec sets and trails staff, including their, their superior that had come up from Cranbrook to meet with us in January to look at what this process would look like, how we can support their role in it, who needs to be at the table, what's the best way to move forward, what are best practices, what are examples of what's been done out there? So we're certainly very aware of the potential for conflict, and we want to avoid it by relying on some of these other learnings from other communities.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. That's all for now. Just thank you very much and to the whole team there for the work that you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So our final item on the agenda is Revelstoke Fire Rescue. Is there any presentation or is that just for information? Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. I'll call for a motion to terminate the meeting.
No.
Oh, there is, oh.
Okay, if you have any questions, any questions?
Oh, I had a quick question just on, for the, for the fire chief, if he's still there.
I'm still here.
Great, thank you. Just real quick, on your inspections, I noticed there was a significant jump from October to November and December. You went from eight inspections to 24 and 33. Any reason why that, that is, just out of curiosity?
Yes, I believe that would be staff vacations and time off.
For inspections?
We only have one fire inspector.
But I, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't phrase the question properly.
Okay.
So in the fourth quarter of 2020, 22, it listed that in October, you had eight inspections, and then in November, you had 24, and in December, you had 33.
Yes.
Does the fire inspector fill in for the building inspector when he's not there? Or like, what am I?
That is correct. The building inspector and the fire inspector do not intertwine. They work together. And also in October, we spent quite a bit of time working with the schoolchildren to delivering the fire protection. We had 250 kids come through. But yes, I believe in October, there was some staff vacation for the fire inspector.
Okay.
It disappeared. There we go.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I see what you're saying. And then last question for you. In regards of your operations and instances responses, it looked for October, November, and December, 123 responses. On average ballpark, if you're going out the door with staffing, how many do you guys have on the truck for those, those responses?
That would be difficult to, to pull out very specifically, so I'm going to give you an estimate right now. All of the calls under the fires, generally speaking, if there are not two staff members on, they will go out the door with one man on the truck. So essentially, the driver is going to attempt to do whatever he can. Yeah, we, we just have one staff 24/7 right now. So we sometimes have the training officer is daytime firefighter, so Monday to Friday, 8 to 4. And so if it's a medical- And so if it's a medical call or a fire, he'll be able to jump on the truck, uh, during the daytime. And so depending on which time of day, uh, these calls come in and, um, I don't have the exact percentage, but there is a majority, uh, slight majority of our calls coming over in the evenings. And, um, so that's when we have one firefighter on, um, right at the moment. So we have the, I can get those times. Um, and in fact, I did have a question for council, if I may, your worship.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, it's just in the reporting, uh, whether you would like to stick with the quarterly reporting, if you would like monthly reporting. And one of the things that I would like to propose is that I actually break out the call statistics a little bit better for you. Time of day, uh, days of the week, I give you a little bit more information as to what's happening in the city. And, um, and if, if that would be the wish of council, I'd be happy to do that. I think it would be informative.
I, I, I would think that, uh, I've seen some nods and heads, uh, with that. I, I think quarter, from my perspective, quarterly would be sufficient because we have a lot of material and, uh, but.
If I may add, yeah, um, I, I think, I think the more information, the better, especially when we're looking at, you know, increasing staffing. And that's kind of, you know, where I'm basing a lot of my questions from. So if you're going out the door, one man only, you know, in my opinion, that's completely unacceptable. I mean, from a fire, you know, fire safety aspect, especially if you know, like, two in, two out, right? So even if you show up driver only, there's only a limited amount of work that you can do to mitigate any kind of response, you know, should have warned that. So, you know, that, you know, those additional stats would, I think, help me make a better, more informed decision when it comes to budgeting and additional personnel and that extent, so.
I wholly agree with your opinion on that. Uh, the two in, two out is, is critically important. Uh, there's a lot of details that I could certainly share with any of the council. At any time, you're free to, free to ask any questions. Send me an email, drop in for coffee. Happy to help.
Great. Um, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Nope.
Motion, terminate then.
Thank you.